Jessica Nguyen Forrest. Jessica Nguyen Forrest. Travis Poole Halifax. Travis Poole Halifax.
Good evening, members of the city council here in Lynchburg. My name is Travis Poole. And I'm a 29-year-old resident of Halifax County and I want to say thanks for the opportunity to speak publicly, since I'm not a public speaker, but I feel like I need to share my thoughts. We should all understand by now criminals don't follow laws and 90% or more of Virginia's thin blue lines won't be used for proposed gun laws of the 2020 session. But we also know how thin the victory margins were for certain Democrats and which seats will become available for someone. We have gotten complacent and it shows. Mr. "Ban Everything Bloomberg" bought this last election with our complacency through a huge donation, which included money and a lot of the bills that are being floated upon this week. Sorry. This has started a genuine Virginia citizens grassroots movement, much stronger than one bought and acting on feelings and fear-mongering. That's just it. They are letting feelings cloud their reasoning and push for these laws. Not a single one of the proposed laws affect criminals, except for the ones like SB 809, which is part of the reform effort. The red flag laws are now ending lives rather than saving them, especially in cities with the strictest gun control laws. We hear about stories of these 5:00 in the morning raids on unsuspecting gun owners in New York. It never ends well for the red flag person. Universal background checks create a registry for confiscation. Should anyone be oppressed by me shooting targets on my own property? So, Virginia State Police ran 200,000 background checks on Black Friday 2019. I would guess most of those souls would be banned if these laws were to pass. Let's please not forget the fact that gun owners keep what's happening in Hong Kong from happening in America. They would love our AR-15s if that were the case here. It's because we have access to these weapons that our voices are even being heard. It's necessary for the free state, our state. Though they have been decreasing since 2016, there are roughly 300 deaths a year in Virginia, which has a population of 8.5 million in 2018. Associated with firearms, 2/3 are suicides and the rest are split between street violence, mental illness, police, and self-defense situations. We didn't have a problem with gun violence until Bloomberg started putting money in pockets. Do your research on his policies and the results during his time as mayor, three times as mayor, before voting them in. Just because you may not like guns and refuse to see past the victim side of a gun does not allow you to vote against the masses that choose not to be uneducated and defenseless. It's nobody's business what I defend myself with. SB 16 is off the table, but HB 961 is worse and does not include a grandfather clause without a registry. They're saying the Second Amendment resolutions don't hold legal weight except for when they use it, but still, I urge you to please adopt this sanctuary resolution and vote against these laws and for our rights. If you don't, we will take-
Thank you, Mr. Poole. Your time has expired. Beau Treywick Richmond. Beau Treywick Richmond.
Madam Mayor, and honorable members of the city council, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. Although I presently reside in Richmond, I was born and raised in Lynchburg, graduated from EC Glass, went on in 1963 and went on to VMI in Vietnam. I strongly have roots that run deep here. My father rests in Spring Hill Cemetery. He was an infantry officer in Burma. My grandparents rest over there. My great-grandfather fought to defend this city with his musket in 1864. And my great-great-great-grandfather was an officer in the 4th Virginia Regiment Continental Line, defending our independence during the revolution. So I strongly advocate that my native home becomes a Second Amendment sanctuary. Last Friday, the newspaper kindly published a letter I sent, and I'd like to reiterate that tonight. Second Amendment guarantees the most fundamental of civil rights, the right of self-preservation. It not only allows the physically weak to defend themselves from the physically strong, it also keeps government from having a monopoly on power. As Lord Acton famously said, "Power corrupts, and absolute power corrupts absolutely." Today, Virginia has come under the absolute power of the party of big government, the so-called progressives, who are the party of socialism and the necessary totalitarian bureaucracy required to implement it. History shows that you may vote your way into socialism, but you must shoot your way back out. That's why this party always wants more gun control. It knows it can't disarm us outright because of the Second Amendment. Disarmament must be accomplished incrementally by convincing us to adopt common sense gun laws of which there will be no end. Mark these words if you never mark any other. Registration, red flag laws, and confiscation will be politicized by the party of big government and used against its political opponents, just as it is using impeachment. Lynchburg must defend its inalienable rights by becoming a Second Amendment sanctuary. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Treywick. Tarek Moyer Amherst. Tarek Moyer Amherst. Benjamin Summers Bedford. Benjamin Summers Bedford. Nellie Anderson. Brenda Collinger. Wendell Johnson. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. My name is Benjamin Summers. I'm a resident of Forest. I live there about two minutes from Lynchburg border, work in Madison Heights, and then my part-time job is in Lynchburg. So, I spend a lot of time here. Grew up here. I went to Sandusky, RS Payne. I've heard, once you're a dragon, you're always a dragon, so that's a good thing. But I just want to say thank you for staying this late and listening to people here. The proposed gun laws of Virginia are patterned after those of New York and California, but who gets prosecuted by these laws? It's not in New York State, the people in the small towns. It's mainly people in two different neighborhoods of New York. One is the Bronx and the other is Brooklyn. And the people who are being prosecuted in those areas are young, black men. Basically, in the home of Bloomberg's racist and unconstitutional stop and frisk laws, you've got these young men that are not committing any serious criminal, they don't have criminal backgrounds, but they're facing years in prison for doing things that basically are not serious crimes. They're basically possession of something. So, like Slate's, Emily Jaffa suggests that we've replaced the war on drugs with a war on guns, and it's still young minority men who are disproportionately impacted. So it's not fair or equitable for the young people in Bedford County to be basically given a free pass because, hey, you know, they're out hunting with a gun. But if a young man in inner-city Lynchburg has a gun that he's trying to defend himself with, and then we're basically going to say, okay, Mr. Lynchburg police officer, Ms. Lynchburg police officer, you need to take care of those people and put them in jail for several years. So, that's just not right. So, because these bills, specifically House Bill 491, will adversely affect the young minorities of Lynchburg and the inner cities of Virginia, I consider them to be racist and I urge you to protect all of our citizens equally. Thank you all.
Thank you. Yes.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, fellow patriots. My name is Nellie Anderson from Bedford County, and I am a legal immigrant for 17 years in the United States and a naturalized citizen and voter for eight years now. And as my KGB accent suggests, I was born and raised on the other side of the Iron Curtain. And today I came here to speak up because I have the freedom of speech, freedom of thought, and I want to exercise it, and I want to encourage everybody who is here to continue to press on. Because this is not about accessorizing our guns, and it's not about the size, but the size matters. It is about our freedom and anything. All of these well-wishing, virtue signaling laws that are redacting, a little bit editing, a little bit manipulating, a little bit changing and tweaking our rights of freedom, they're a huge step to bring us to that country where I came from, where I was told what to eat, how to dress, where to work, how to work. And we want, as American citizens who swore allegiance to the flag and to our Constitution and to our rights, to keep remembering that the price of freedom is blood, and if we are not willing to bleed, we better not give it up for promised comfort. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for this public hearing to consider adopting a resolution designating the city of Lynchburg a Second Amendment sanctuary. Next, we will have the matter now rest with counsel. Thank you all for being here this long. And I will look to Councilmember Hegelson for his first comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll make a motion for approval of the Second Amendment sanctuary resolution.
Madam Mayor, I'll second that.
The motion has been made and seconded for the approval of a resolution designated the city of Lynchburg a Second Amendment sanctuary. And Councilmember Hegelson, further discussion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's not much extra that needs to be said. I mean, it's been great to hear and see so many patriots. You know, lots of times, I appreciate lots of you that said, "Oh, the time is late." Let me tell you, this was inspiring and encouraging. It was history. It was lots of discussion, lots of patriots that came forward, that came out, lots of good friends that I get to see, and it's so nice that we have got to hear from them. Our job, as was stated numerous times, is not to dissect the different bills or the different legislation, but to represent the citizens. And we heard pretty loud and clear that the citizens want us to represent them by putting forward and voting for the Second Amendment sanctuary resolution. So I do hope that the rest of you will also vote in favor of this. I know, as several have stated, you may not like guns, you may not like the issue, but our job is to represent citizens. And we heard pretty loud and clear what the citizens want. I think it makes sense constitutionally, and let's represent them and vote for this. Thank you.
Councilmember Perah.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I'd like to thank everybody for attending tonight. This meeting has been long. There have been some unexpected modifications to it, and you have been stalwart in your participation. Thank you very much. I'm proud to second and support the resolution presented. I have heard from both sides of the arguments, and I've heard reasonable opinions, both for and against this resolution, and I'd like to address those reasons against that I find compelling. Like you, I believe in the rule of law. If you didn't, you would not be here tonight. You would not have left any firearms in the car, and you would not have participated in this public process. It is the reason you are here. You, as law-abiding citizens, will follow the laws passed by the Commonwealth. This is the reason why you're so concerned about the proposed legislative action. Frankly, if you didn't plan to follow the law, you wouldn't have even showed up. So I really appreciate your concern on this issue. And yes, I'm sure that any laws passed will face a significant legal challenge, which is also in keeping with the Constitution and our rule of law. This is what keeps our society functioning and not falling into anarchy. There is an argument that this resolution does not fit the rule of law, and I actually agree with that argument. I acknowledge that the legal standing of the resolution is tenuous. However, this resolution, although somewhat flawed, is a clear and important symbol that has real meaning to many of the participants here tonight, most of my constituents in Ward, for thousands of citizens in the city of Lynchburg, and to me as an individual. I stand with you, I represent your interests, and I will engage in the debate, both legislative and legal, to prohibit the infringement of our Second Amendment rights.
Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Perah.
This is a much broader issue than the Second Amendment. This is about the differences between urban and rural cultures. This new legislative body has six leadership positions. One of the leaders lives in Portsmouth, and the other five live in Fairfax. What concern or understanding do any of these leaders have for the city of Lynchburg? Or any area outside of Northern Virginia, for that matter? They would be shocked to hear that many rural school districts offer excused absences on the first day of hunting season, if the school isn't closed outright. I grew up in Amherst County. This is part of our culture and our identity, and those in power in Richmond appear to have no concern for it whatsoever. What you are doing tonight is the correct approach. Appeal to your elected representatives, see if they align with your beliefs or not, and work to get representatives of our values elected into office. The way to do that is to show up and vote. Assist those in other districts who support your values. And work hard to increase our turnout to offset the impact of urban Northern Virginia. Lastly, there's a quote frequently misattributed to Lincoln, but made by Ulysses S. Grant at his first inaugural address on March 4, 1869. I quote, "I shall on all subjects have a policy to recommend, but none to enforce against the will of the people. Laws are to govern all alike, those opposed as well as those who favor them. I know no method to secure the repeal of bad or obnoxious laws so effective as their stringent execution," end quote. To our Commonwealth's executive and legislative branches, you are getting ready to grab the tiger by the tail. I know of few issues that fuel such political emotions as this. Are you sure you want to go down this path? Because if you do, you will mobilize a sleeping political force that will work tirelessly to unseat you in the next election. Members of council, I hope you will join Councilmember Hegelson and may, and support this resolution. Thank you all for your time.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I greatly appreciate the messages that have been delivered to me from those who advocate for the Second Amendment sanctuary resolution, as well as those that oppose it. Constructive civic participation is a very good thing. I've listened to the voices, read the messages, and appreciate all of you, especially being here at this early hour in the morning. My core instincts oppose any and all legislative restrictions on fundamental constitutional liberties. I equally believe the liberties guaranteed by the Second Amendment are as important as any other liberty guaranteed in the Bill of Rights. I agree with you about the value of firearms and their value in the hands of citizens. I think that point was made absolutely clear tonight. However, it is undeniable that reasonable limitations have been repeatedly imposed on each and all constitutional liberties over the last two centuries. For example, in writing the majority opinion of the 2008 Heller decision, referenced in this Second Amendment sanctuary resolution, Supreme Court Justice Antonin Scalia recognized that limitations have been appropriately imposed on Second Amendment liberties. In that Heller decision, Justice Scalia wrote, and I quote, "Like most rights, the rights of the Second Amendment is not unlimited. From Blackstone to the 19th century cases, commentators and courts routinely explained that the right was not a right to keep and carry whatever weapon whatsoever, in any manner whatsoever, and for whatever purpose. Nothing in our court's opinion should be taken to cast doubt on longstanding prohibitions on the possession of firearms by felons and the mentally ill, or laws forbidding the carrying of firearms in sensitive places such as schools and government buildings, or laws imposing conditions and qualification on the commercial sale of arms," unquote. And Justice Scalia went on to state, quote, "We also recognize another important limitation on the right to keep and carry arms. As we have explained, the sorts of weapons protected by the Second Amendment were those in common use at the time. That limitation is fairly supported by the historical tradition of prohibiting the carrying of dangerous and unusual weapons," unquote, Justice Scalia. The recitals in the 11th paragraph of this proposed sanctuary resolution declare that Lynchburg City Council expresses, quote, "Opposition to any law that would unconstitutionally restrict the right of citizens of Lynchburg to keep and bear arms," unquote. And the sanctuary resolution's final declaration states, quote, "Lynchburg City Council hereby declares its intent to oppose any infringement on the right of law-abiding citizens to keep and bear arms," unquote. So the question is, if restrictions have been lawfully placed on the Second Amendment for centuries, who decides whether a Virginia law unconstitutionally restricts or infringes on a law abiding regarding the citizen's right to keep arms? Or if a court, for example, decides that a new Virginia law restricting the Second Amendment's right to bear arms is constitutional, then Lynchburg must honor it. If a court decides that a new Virginia law's restriction on the Second Amendment is unconstitutional, then Lynchburg cannot enforce it. When courts determine the constitutionality of a law, then Lynchburg must follow the court's decisions. So if this resolution merely declares that Lynchburg respects court decisions, then this resolution is irrelevant and meaningless because Lynchburg must and always will honor court decisions and cannot enforce a Virginia law that declares a law unconstitutional. However, if this resolution is merely a symbolic and only intended to loudly and clearly ask Virginia state legislators and government leaders to not impose further restrictions on the Second Amendment, then this resolution is not well-written and needs to be revised. But, from all appearances, this resolution implies that Lynchburg has the authority to determine constitutionality of any new Virginia law affecting the Second Amendment, and that Lynchburg can and will refuse to enforce any Virginia law that Lynchburg decides to be unconstitutional. If that is the case, then this resolution directly conflicts with the US Constitution and Lynchburg State Corporate Charter. Let us be reminded, Lynchburg is a subdivision of the Commonwealth of Virginia. As a subdivision, Lynchburg must respect and enforce all Virginia laws unless and until a higher legal authority says it does not. Now, Virginia Commonwealth attorneys and local law enforcement officers have discretion to not prosecute a case or to not make an arrest if they conclude that the case or the facts lack merit. That's their discretion. But on the other hand, Lynchburg City Council does not have blanket discretion when enforcing state laws. The city has no legal authority to categorically ignore the laws of its sovereign, the Commonwealth of Virginia. Those who sincerely claim to honor the US Constitution, as most of you do, must respect Article III of the Constitution, which designates the courts as the third branch of government, and delegates to the courts the authority to resolve conflicts between any laws and the Constitution. Alexander Hamilton emphasized this when he wrote Federalist Number 78, and Chief Justice John Marshall confirmed it in the landmark decision of Marbury versus Madison. If city council were to enact a Second Amendment sanctuary resolution such as we have now before us, that asserts that Lynchburg can determine the constitutionality of a state law, we would ignore the primary mandate of Article III of the US Constitution, that the courts have the ultimate authority to interpret the Constitution. Not the President, not Congress, not state legislators or governors, not county boards of supervisors, and certainly not the Lynchburg City Council. If Lynchburg City Council were to adopt this resolution, I believe we would dishonor and disrespect the US Constitution's foremost principles by claiming that a state locality has the authority to overrule the sovereignty of its own state. Neither the founding fathers nor the authors of the Federalists recognize the authority of a locality to be superior to the authority and sovereignty of any state. Yet that insubordination is what this Second Amendment resolution currently proposes. Through my legal career, I have zealously advocated for the rule of law and for law and order. Yet how do we respect the rule of law or promote law and order if every locality can pick and choose which laws each will comply with and which laws each will disobey? I think we cannot. Until and unless a court declares a Virginia law to be unconstitutional, then Lynchburg must respect and enforce that law. I also point out that all Lynchburg City Council members took an oath to obey the laws of the Commonwealth. Each of us would violate our oath if we advocated for disobedience of state laws. And personally, as an attorney-at-law, my own professional ethics prohibit me from advocating that anyone disobey a state law. On a related note, the Second Amendment sanctuary initiative imitates declarations made by some Virginia localities from 1958 and into the early 1960s, when those localities adopted the infamous practice of massive resistance to laws requiring Virginia to racially integrate public schools. Those acts of nullification and interposition were found to be unconstitutional. I think it would be just as unlawful for Lynchburg to adopt a similar policy of massive resistance and unilateral interposition to Virginia laws affecting firearms and the Second Amendment. And finally, the city council has a long-established policy of not passing resolutions on matters beyond city council's direct authority. These issues we've discussed tonight are beyond the authority of city council. Your voices should be directed to the ears of those in the General Assembly and leadership in Richmond, but not to city council. Therefore, if Lynchburg or any locality disputes a state law, it has two options. The first is to ask the General Assembly to change the law or repeal it. And the second is to litigate the issue in a court of law. As for the first option, I supported that approach when we last met on December 10. That proposal for city council to amend its legislative agenda was defeated 4 to 3. Still now, I would like for this council to send that message to Richmond in our legal agenda. But city council rules prohibit a motion that has been defeated from being reconsidered within the short time period that has elapsed since that December meeting, unless a council member who voted in opposition of that motion asks that it be reconsidered. Since that may be very unlikely tonight, the first option seems fairly moot. Thus, Lynchburg's only other option is to litigate the constitutionality of any new law once it is enacted. I certainly would like- I certainly would like to capture the video of tonight's session and send it to every member of the General Assembly and to Governor Northam, so he could see and hear and feel the sentiment that has been expressed tonight. But for the reasons that I have stated, I regret that I cannot support the motion as presented. Thank you.
Councilmember Wright? Councilmember Wright, thank you. Councilmember Nelson, Councilmember Wright, or Councilmember Wilder?
Councilmember Wilder, would you like to go ahead?
All right.
Again, I want to thank all the citizens of Lynchburg and the surrounding areas for coming tonight. We appreciate the voice. Your voice has been heard. Over the course of several weeks, we've had so many discussions at the last session and this session in reference to the issues about gun rights and the right to bear arms. First of all, I want to make sure something's clear. I believe everyone has the right to bear arms. I don't know enough about the legislation that's been proposed. I have some information that's been presented, and I have all the legislation, even though it hasn't been approved yet or was even recommended. So I'm not in a position to say I would support this resolution if I haven't seen all the information coming from Richmond to make an adequate, good decision on the particular policy for us to do. I understand Councilmember Nelson's point of view. I hear that. We don't have certain rights, and I understand all of that. One point that was made was when one of the gentlemen was talking about some of the policies were racially based and made indications. Now, when we talk about racial issues, it took me to another level. Now, if we want to have a discussion about whether this is a racial issue or about racial issues, I have a whole list of things we can talk about, from economic racial issues, from wealth to education to housing. So I have several issues we can talk about. But when it comes to guns, we can bring them now. But I have several issues we can meet at another time. I'd be more than happy to discuss that policy. I appreciate your passion on both sides. We've received so many emails from persons for, from persons against. I appreciate your voices. I appreciate your consideration on this issue. I appreciate you coming out here at 1:40 a.m., where you could be home with your families. I appreciate that. I'm thankful to be a part of our community. I'm thankful to be a part of our City Council. Even though sometimes we disagree on certain issues, I respect, even less one of them, I respect all of your voices that you have as well. I cannot support the motion the way it is written, but I appreciate the votes, but I cannot support it. Thank you.
Councilmember Wright?
Read the law.
Councilmember Wright?
Short term.
Respect.
Counsel.
Respect. Councilmember Wright?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My family's been in Lynchburg and the surrounding area for almost 340 years or so. We are long-term residents of this community, and folks on both sides of my family own firearms. Pretty common. But Councilmember Nelson laid out very well the legal constriction on City Council authority and our longstanding practice not to engage in state and national debates over which we have no authority, and the resolution as presented suggests that we think that we can arbitrate here in this room the constitutionality of whatever passes in Richmond, which isn't the case. And it's important, of course, that we voice our opinions to folks in Richmond, to the governor, that we voice our opinion to a member of Congress. That's as it should be. That's the way the system is designed to work. I will be doing this. I hope you will too. And I'm grateful for everybody who came out this evening.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Dolan?
Thank you very much. I'm appreciative that so many citizens came out and taken time to give us their thoughtful, share their concerns regarding this issue. It's a serious issue, for sure. I am concerned, however, that if this Lynchburg City Council adopts formal action on this matter, it will set a dangerous precedent of distracting our attention and dividing our community on a number of issues over which we have no local governing body jurisdiction. Were we to pass a resolution on Second Amendment rights, we would open the door to petitioners to ask us to weigh in on matters about which we have no legal standing and no authority to act. Should we have a public hearing on impeaching the President? Should we have a public hearing on abortion rights? How about on marijuana legalization? I do not diminish the point of view of those who want a sanctuary city. However, I still believe that this conversation belongs at the state and national level. Our General Assembly and the U.S. Congress have a long history of protecting citizens on the Second Amendment as a fundamental right. These bodies interpret the Constitution as they write and pass laws. Local law enforcement will be and must be guided by these laws. We also must remember we are a Dillon State. Our local government has limited authority to pass laws. Our highest priority is to attend to the needs of our citizens within the power that we are authorized to act. Any discussion of state or federal-level issues over which we have no legislative control serves only to set ourselves against one another needlessly and to detract from our ability to best serve our local citizens. Thank you all. Thank you all for coming tonight and for your participation.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming out to share your opinions and thoughts regarding the Second Amendment Sanctuary Resolution discussion for the city of Lynchburg. Thank you to my councilmembers. For some of us, it has been a day that started at 8:00 a.m. this morning with the first meeting, so thank you. Passions and opinions run high on both sides of the debate, and when voices are equal on the issue, or you know that it comes a time that you must weigh both perspectives as councilmembers or leaders, you have to then reach within your own decision-making process and perspective and represent the right thing that you know to do for your city. We all have an opinion, we all have our personal thoughts and our beliefs, we all have our own background and experiences that we bring to this debate. I am an American citizen. I am a woman of color. I am a caretaker, a mother, a grandmother. I am the only veteran on council. I am a concealed weapon carrier. I have been shooting guns since I was 17 years old. I am a gun advocate, and I am a child of the most high. So I think I checked many boxes in this discussion tonight. I have been serving my country and my community since I was 17 years old. At 17, I entered the United States Navy voluntarily, and I'm now, as I said, the only veteran serving on Lynchburg City Council. I had a veteran who disagreed with my perspective at an event recently. However, as fellow veterans, we agreed to disagree on this topic, respecting each other's opinions. I've been a volunteer public servant and leader in the community for the past 12 years. I have no problem listening to citizens and varying perspectives, been doing that for a while now. I'm an at-large council member, and I represent citizens throughout Lynchburg, a city of 82,000 persons. They have many sent us emails, phone calls, letters, U.S. mail, walked up to us in grocery stores and other venues and events that we have been attending. They have provided their perspective on this issue. I will defer my comments to Councilmember Nelson's comments, which were thorough and complete and represented previous history for councils. Lynchburg is a growing, prospering town. We have a quality of life that people enjoy and can see themselves, their families, businesses, and organizations being a part of, just as those who stated that tonight. I want to continue the progress. I am going to make the decisions that I believe will prosper our city and residents, listening to the perspectives of others. I expect residents to share all of their opinions, views, and perspectives around this issue with our legislators in Richmond, Representatives Byron, Walker, Senators Newman, and Peak. These are the representatives who will cast their votes regarding the state's gun laws, carry the voices of their constituents to Richmond, and debate with their colleagues. As a council, I expect us to continue working with our city administration and our citizens to handle the business that makes our city a great place for people to call home, and I will not be supporting the motion. I am now ready to call for a vote on the motion of adopting a resolution designating the city of Lynchburg a Second Amendment sanctuary. I will call for a voice vote. Councilmember Wright?
No.
Councilmember Wilder?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Dolan?
Nay.
Councilmember Nelson?
Nay.
Councilmember Perrow?
Aye.
Councilmember Hegelson?
Aye.
And I will vote no. No's have it. The motion is denied. The public hearing is now closed. Thank you all.